Please, please rise, take the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd all please, bow your head or take one moment for a prayer, please. Dear God, we have so much to be thankful for. I think sometimes we take things for granted, which we never should do. Thank you for our healthcare workers. I thank you for the healthcare that's provided in Hazen. Thank you for your guidance and your healing powers and your, and your grace and mercy. Please watch over this group of people as we truly try to do the best we can for our community. In your name we pray. Amen. Okay, uh, reading and approve the minutes from April 21st. Uh, we need equalization meeting and regular meeting. Monty, can we do them both together or do them individually?
Oh, you can do that together.
Okay.
Motion to approve both as presented.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern. Question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Alright. Uh, approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions? Monty, I didn't get any updates.
Nothing but from my hand.
Anything different? Okay, I'll take a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, I believe that was, uh, Polkert.
Yes.
Second.
Second by Hack. Question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, agenda set. Uh, engineers report. We got anybody, Monty?
Jared is present.
Okay.
Okay. Jared, we're engineering here to present the report. Um, you should have copied it in front of you and on the screen here. Uh, run through kind of a list of some things going on in town. So Expedition Estates is a project that's being privately constructed there. Um, where we sit is, you know, a month ago, I was here, Tim Williams representing Expeditions or Williams Building Companies was, was here. Um, since the last meeting, he kind of said that they were planning to, to pave that east end of that loop and they are still planning to, to do that. Um, uh, in the correspondence with them, they were thinking towards late May is when that was probably going to happen. There's just a section at the east end of that that has to get paved. Um, uh, I don't see any problem with that. We kind of mentioned that, you know, the other work is still has to happen on, on 11th. Uh, we've asked them for a schedule. We've asked them for when that work is gonna happen. Um, you guys have moratorium on building permits, I think, until that stuff is, is addressed. Um, I feel like that's gotta come to a head here pretty quick, but, um, since that meeting, what we did was we sent a, a to-do list of remaining work in the subdivision. I'm not calling it a punch list because a punch list is a contract term that basically starts a warranty on things. So it's a to-do list. It included things like, um, adjusting some valves, um, raising things to grade, making sure that the grass heating was established at 75% so we can release a stormwater permit, finishing the paving on the east end of the project, um, still addressing the sewer issues under 11th and we've asked them for a full schedule of that. I don't have that full schedule. I just have a partial schedule of where they're, um, wanting to just get kind of what we call the easier stuff done on the, on the east end, so. I don't see any problem with that. Let them pave it, but, um, something is gonna have to happen here and in talking with their staff, I think that'll happen pretty quick. So I, I believe you'll be in contact with our developer again, hopefully, hopefully soon. So, but any questions? No? Okay.
No.
Okay. But we are talking and there is work starting, so that's a good sign. Um, so alley improvements, that job is, is darn near done. Um, there's a little bit of concrete work to do. There's a little bit of concrete rework or some repairs to make. I wouldn't call those extensive. We always hold 10% contingency or excuse me, retainage till we get to the end of the job. So while I don't have a schedule yet from Winkler when they plan to finish, I assume they'll, you know, call pretty quick saying they intend to finish it and, um, assuming those repairs get, get made, we'll be able to close that job out pretty quick. There's maybe just a couple of days worth of work remaining on that job. And that was of no fault of theirs. There was some work added after the original contracts, some of this private work. So it's, um, it's to be expected. Uh, sanitary sewer improvements, so, uh, there's been a pre-con meeting on this job. Um, this is the, uh, we'll be rehabbing manholes, lining sewer remains and fixing spot repairs. The spot repairs will start first. CC Steel is the general contractor on this job. They do plan to start next week. We've had a pre-construction meeting. I've let them know of those dates that you added the last meeting we were here. Um, so they will have to work around those. Grant is gonna be helping me with this job. You guys know Grant. Um, but he'll run the construction meetings weekly and then, uh, I'll be involved in those as well. So any questions regarding the sanitary sewer job? No? Okay. Alright, so, um, really the only kind of left, the, the last meeting I, I left here, there, there's a, a blowout kind of over by Senex on that asphalt road. We started talking about land use change on that area that's now being kind of traveled more by, heavily by trucks. So what, what we did at the last meeting is I had an opinion of cost here of doing this road in concrete. Because that's usually build things in concrete if, if they either need to last a long time or they need to be beefier. You can build them in asphalt, but it's, um, that asphalt section gets to be pretty beefy and it's kind of, uh, we do usually what's called a life cycle cost analysis where we'll compare, uh, high capital cost concrete roadway with low maintenance to a more modestly priced asphalt road with, with higher maintenance. Generally with asphalt, every 15 years, 10 to 15 years, you're doing treatments to it forever. You're doing the crack sealing, you're doing the chip sealing, you're doing overlays. This kind of surprised us. I had anticipated that asphalt would cost more, but because of the attractive concrete prices that we've been getting from your local concrete guy, I'm actually projecting that concrete will cost less money on this road, which is fantastic. Because, um, the cost estimate I brought last time was this. It showed this section being done in concrete. So we basically just went back and looked at comparable bid prices right now for what things are going for in asphalt and because somebody has to come from Bismarck to do it, it's more expensive. And there's a few other reasons too. Like when you're doing a truck route, your, your concrete section's gonna more closely match what we have there now. If we're gonna do it in asphalt, we need to dig out more dirt on the bottom side and there's just, there's more risk. And it's, it gets to be a thicker section. It's an 18-inch street section, like six inches of gravel on top of a foot of gravel or six inches asphalt on top of a foot of gravel or seven over 10 or whatever it ends up being versus concrete. It's, it's, it'll be closer to what it is now. So anyway, I was expecting that I was gonna be comparing them and showing you the overall life expectancy would be better um, with asphalt or with concrete, but it's, it's obvious, um, we expect concrete to be the better bargain. Just unless we don't get any bids locally, you know. Trying to do 20 or 30 projects is probably something your local contractor can't handle, but a job of this size where it's two blocks, we know that they can handle that. And assuming he will bid, um, we think this will be the better bargain. So at the, what it really shows though is it is a, it is a sizable job, you know. It's 550,000 or 570,000 in today's construction dollars to do those two and a half blocks. Um, generally the way you guys have faced these things in the past is to look at doing some type of special assessment. And when we, so don't think that this is something that's gonna happen this summer. It's just, it could, I mean, in these, if, if you really, really wanted it to happen, there's some ways to speed up the process to get the people together, petition for it, want it, design it, bid it. Could be something that gets built this fall. Um, but I guess I, I foresee maybe the next step would be to engage in them with some conversation about what we think it's gonna cost and see what kind of interest there is in doing it and going that route. That was kind of the, the schedule with last summer with the people in the alley. We did a cost estimate. We projected some costs. We showed what it would cost over the next 20 years and they basically petitioned for the work because they saw the value in it. They may not agree in this spot, but they may think that it needs to be done. And I think that's a good way to go. So if you think that's okay, I would be, I'd be happy to meet with them along with the city here and walk through some estimated costs. If that's not gonna happen, then I think we gotta patch the roadway, um, and just, you know, put a Band-Aid on it and get by. So I think we should do this sooner rather than later to get them thinking about it. We're gonna have an asphalt company here in town, um, both now with Expedition Estates, but later when they're doing the spot repair, like the, the pavement repairs on the spot repairs that CC Steel is starting later this month. So, um, we will have time to do that, but as long as you're okay with me visiting with these folks or comments.
How many folks is there over there, Monty? Senex?
Yeah, we're looking at five, maybe six, if we only do that two block area.
And that goes to the laundry man, to the, or to the quarters, the fire department, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you go all that way. That was six up to 200. Um, like Sixth Street.
Uh, yeah, one block of north and south and was it two blocks of east-west roughly? Yeah. We weren't certain about the need to do the north-south on Fourth Avenue because that was... It's holding up right now. Yeah, that was already asphalt and maybe 16 project, I think. Yep. And we beefed out then, so.
Monty, can you zoom that out a little bit more so I can, by chance? Or no?
Now we're gonna go through that intersection, correct? Always do so when trucks are coming off of 200, that, that entire intersection will be concrete.
We had, um, I don't have the map in front of me. We looked at that last meeting, but yes, we were anticipating doing that intersection too. Um, so.
Yeah, yeah, because they're, they're turning right there and that's a lot, a lot of pressure and pushing on that asphalt, yeah. Okay.
So if you wanna break it, you wanna get it a different way? Like a, a normal city block, and every city block's different, it's about 1,500 square yards. So because some are wider, some are narrower, some are longer, it's, it's a, it's about four blocks of typical street. That make sense? Yeah. So it's just they're, just because it's three on the map, they're, they're bigger and longer or wider than normal ones, okay? So if you look at it that way, you know, doing a block of concrete street, maybe a residential block is closer to like 150 grand. So if we take one out, it'll be down. If it, if it, if we add one, it'll be, it'll be more. That, it's a way of looking at it, I guess.
And then always, can you scroll down, Monty? What was the payment cost?
Sorry, go back up, Monty, please. The, the way I looked at it, sorry, a little, this, this bottom one was the asphalt one. I did not break it into three lots or five lots or 10 lots. The way I looked at it was if somebody has 100 feet of property or 50 feet of property, this is what the assessment would be. The one-time assessment versus if you paid for it, what do we have here? Over 30 years. That's, you know, you either have the option of doing a one-time payment with zero interest or you pay for it over 20 years. I'm pretty sure that's a 20, no, that, that would be a 30-year payment.
Right, could do a 30-year, yes.
With concrete, you can do up to 30 years. With asphalt, I would not advise it. The first thing the bank is gonna ask us is what's the life expectancy of the project?
Right.
But if you go concrete, you can fill that assessment out. So.
I would remember.
I'd like to see the number broke down on the entire thing, I guess.
Okay. I did not do any like buy down or anything like that where I don't know if that's an apple to apple situation here or not. Um, but that's just, those repayment costs on the top one that the company generally just show that, you know, if you got 100 feet of property, it's 30 grand. And spread that out over 30 years and this shows what the city's loan payment is. These bottom ones show, we, we always add a percent interest on that, like the 3% instead of 2. But you know, the city borrowed the money at 2, the homeowners are paid 3 and then ideally you need to be paid off after 29 years instead of 28 years. But that's just a common way for cities to, to do that stuff. I would be very surprised if this is gonna happen fast or happen, you know, might not happen at all. But I put these costs together with you and I, I think if this, if you see fit, I would be happy to meet with them or adjust this as however you guys see fit.
I think, I think it makes, I think it makes sense to me with them and just, let's just get, let's get those numbers so we have something at hand. I'm shocked that that concrete will be cheaper than asphalt. I'm pleasantly surprised, but shocked.
I wasn't meant to spin that in the, I shouldn't have at all.
It's a, it's a, it's, we just look at the bidding environment and you guys have had phenomenal concrete bids because you have someone local. And, uh, if we were in Bismarck where there's multiple asphalt people in town, we would have better asphalt prices. So I could be wrong, but I, we were, I was surprised we needed the estimate.
Well, yeah, I'm with Jerry. I'm game to have you sit down with these folks and...
Okay. At least tell them what it is. In the meantime though...
Monty?
Yes.
So what would the city's buy down be? What would be our responsibility since these projects exist that we would, that we've decided at, you know, different
It would be the 10%.
levels that we set up?
I'm sorry, it would be the 10%, so it'd be about 57,000.
Okay.
So, um, what I would like to do though in just, we, this could, this is a potential move really, really slow. Um, we've got this spot in town and then we've got a couple of water main breaks that you guys had this winter that, um, are grounded right now. I'd like to get a quote from Quality Asphalt to do those this summer while they're in town. You know, there's gonna be, they're gonna be here patching roadways anyways, so if you're okay with it. I have the measurements from Dave already, um, to get a quote and then you guys could consider that in June if you want to have them do those spots or not. You already have a main color lined up.
I, I agree.
Okay.
I agree. Let's, anybody else opposed to that?
Well, Jerry, you know, I just don't like the price of a special assessment. I mean, it's gonna be extremely high, so.
Do this?
Yeah.
What are our options?
You're really only talking three houses on that stretch. That's all that we'll get. Everything else will be city, Senex, school.
Understand that, but it's gonna be like, you know, it's gonna be extremely high within like three.
Three houses.
Yeah.
Jerry, all that burden.
Yeah.
But you can't really go off of that number though either because he's just going off of square footage. You know, the special assessment board might deem that it's less for them than it would be for the other commercial properties there.
Yeah.
So that, it still could be high, you know.
You're just saying that the commercial generating places probably have more of the burden?
I, I would believe so.
Well, I would say the reason I guess why they were doing this is because, yeah.
It could be high.
Because the one business does.
I have seen some cities take that into account and add like a traffic factor to it that, um, you know, whether you're a school or apartment building or office complex or, or truck stop, they will look at it slightly different. If you tell me to come up with a better, different scenario, I can come up with my own or if you have a suggestion, this will be it. But I can't, it's hard for me to know what the special assessment committee is gonna do. Yeah. Yeah, because I'm with you Casey, that's, that's, that's a big burden for...
Yeah.
Then, yeah, because they would be, they would, who's to say that they wouldn't care if the road was stayed the same way as it is? It's not affecting them anyway. They can still be at home.
Yeah.
Okay. You want me to just come up with something or not sure yet?
I would just like to do, do I guess, do I guess, you know, patches, you know?
Oh, yeah. I think the patches have to be done for sure.
Okay.
But the patches are gonna get, but if you will look, like that road's getting beat up.
Yeah.
Or, or the patch is gonna give us buy for a little bit.
And that's something that could be potentially done in the interim while we're trying to figure out, you know, an absolute remedy rate.
Well, then what I'm, then what I'll do is I will, I will just, I'll look and see what the policies are in Bismarck and Fargo and Mandan that they've been using and I will share that with Monty so that maybe we can readjust those bottom numbers quickly before meeting with them. Okay? Okay. And I'll get the quotes for the asphalt patch regardless. I think that's a must.
Yeah.
If it makes sense. Something will have to happen with that road though. And I...
The two I'd like to know, I guess, like what the size, the size of the district's gonna be too.
Yeah.
Because that's gonna change a lot of things too, so.
Guys, I'm having a hard time hearing conversation. Can you speak up a little bit more, please?
Casey wanted to know, he wanted some input on the, the size of the district for this too, of who benefits from it.
Yeah.
Because I, I agree. I agree that these bottom numbers were, were done pretty damn quick, right? Like we just, we just looked at it. This is how much it costs. This is the city's yearly payment and, yeah, okay. It'd be, it'd be to, happy to look at that more. Okay?
Monty, we can go ahead and throw this on next meeting, can't we? Is that for Jerry?
First meeting in June, then...
Yeah.
Yeah. It don't, this front-end stuff usually takes so long to get through, right? I don't see us bidding this in July, building it August. It's a next year deal. We usually get the best construction prices in January, February timeframe for construction next year.
Would you say the first meeting in June is fair for you?
Oh, yeah, it's fine. It should be fine. Unless I elect, of course, but at one of these meetings, we'll be here. So I don't, it doesn't have to be a rush. Okay?
We're fine with that?
Okay. So pay attention to the boundaries of the district. Look at the truck impact factor and try and see what appears to be the most fair for that area.
Small cars.
And the, and double check the, oh, and then the quote for the patch. Okay, alright, 10th quarter. Okay, that's all I have generally. Um, I do owe you still that capital improvement plan presentation. Um, I'm not gonna give it tonight, but we spent some time going through those things. I'd like to take a half hour, walk through those things with you guys. And, uh, this was one of the projects in there is where, where does this fit in the grand scheme of your needs? And, um, I, I wanted to do that, uh, two weeks ago when I was out of town. So I'm thinking that's one of your second meetings in the month. It's not the first meeting. So you can do that in two weeks or in six weeks. But it's gonna take a half hour for me to go through it.
Okay, thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving on to, uh, 6B, I'm sorry, 6A, B. Uh, we have two local permit, um, one for...
Sorry, Jerry. Sorry to interrupt. 5B is the resolution stuff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Let me go back. Let me go back to here. 5B resolution for the sanitary sewer improvement loan agreement certification. All right, thank you.
We've already approved the district. The contract has been signed for the sanitary sewer project. These documents are needed to do the loan, close or open the loan agreement and the certificate to continue with the project.
Okay, thank you, Monty. I didn't entertain a motion?
So moved.
Uh, is that motion by Weidrich?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Second by Polkerts.
Second by Polkert. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Polkerts.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Obenauer.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Now, I'll get, catch up with myself here. 6A and B, two permit, uh, one for Hazen North Star Baseball, which it sounds like we finally got all the information, um, for what they're gonna use it for. And then for, uh, Mercer County, P O A. Let's do these both together if you guys would like to, please.
Monty, can you go back to the first one, please?
And all the information on this will now be heated, is?
Yes, I did get a order of it missed down, so it is all complete.
I'm guessing it was 50/50 raffles?
No.
So it's a hundred thousand?
They are not 50/50. They're doing different amounts every day.
Oh, okay.
With, with minimum being 100 and the maximum being 1,000.
Make motion to approve both permits.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried. Thank you. Is Lauren there for shot test?
She is.
Alright, Lauren, you got it. It's up to you.
Hey, Jerry. Okay, well, so...
No, thank you.
Well, thank you. It's so good to hear your voice. So up on the screen right now, we have the, um, a little video put together by a committee or a group of people from Senex Corporation and they are, they are hosting a contest this year with $150,000 in prize money for, they chose five of their top festivals based on application to the company that, that were made back in January. So they picked Hazen among the five festivals and we are now starting May 1st in competition with four other festivals from the region for a top prize of $100,000. Um, all five of the contestants in the contest will get a prize. Um, the top one by vote will get 100,000. Then there's a $25,000 prize, 210, 210, and then a five. So it's, we'll, we'll be somewhere in there based on how many votes we can put together between now and the end of May. So, um, Monty was just gonna hit the start button and then he just quickly will show you if you haven't already. So the rules are pretty simple. Um, anyone, anywhere can vote. Um, you don't have to live in Hazen or live in North Dakota. You can live in Guam or you can live in France. So you can live wherever you live. And, um, it just, you have to have your own discreet email. So if you, you can't... So if you, you can't vote twice with the same email. So the.
Did you say you can or cannot, Lauren, vote twice?
You cannot.
Say you can or you cannot?
No, cannot vote twice, I tried.
All right, my turn.
They found out right away. Um, so, so the voting will go through the end of May, and then on, I think it's June seventeenth or eighteenth, I've forgotten, they'll announce the, the, I wish they were writing a little ticker, so we could see where, you know, as the votes come in, but we don't have any way of knowing until the very last day, until June seventeenth, how, how we did. So, I just wanted to let you guys know, they just, uh, they told us in March that we were one of the five, uh, but we couldn't, we kind of talked and a lot of peculiar kind of thing until the first of May. So I just wanted to get down here and know that it's the first of May. And, um, so, any, you know, anybody who's get to vote at your workplace, or your family, or your friends, and, um, if we happen to get a hundred thousand dollars, we'll be right back down here and see you all, tell you all about it. So.
So what's your plans if you, if we win this?
Well, we've been so focused on just trying to be part of the contest, and get the votes, and, you know, really, we haven't talked too much about, seems, and probably don't wanna jinx it, it's sort of like, but, but we'll have to have quite a discussion about that, you know? It's for chalk, but it could be used, they don't really have any limitations on how the prize money is used, it could be used to benefit the park, um, it could be used to bring in Bon Jovi, I mean, it could be, you know, so I guess we'll just be having to talk to the community about that. Can I say? Any other questions, maybe? Jerry, any questions?
Lauren.
What?
Who filled out the application, was, did Senex, did Senex instigate that, or did you guys?
Well, yeah, so, last year, Paul Dahl kind of said, hey, you guys, there's this big opportunity, just, you know, kind of went by this year, and so he made sure we got a heads up, um, when Senex rolled out the, uh, contest this year, and I just, I wrote the application, it was just really simple, three hundred words, which didn't seem like near enough, you know? And then they followed that up, uh, with a Zoom interview that Mark, that Marty and I did. And with our committee, there were like three, three people on the Senate Committee, and we made our pitch, and we sent them pictures and videos, and I guess they liked it.
Yeah, so, congratulations, the kids are in vote, and that'd be, that'd be so amazing for community and Shockfest, uh, be awesome.
Yeah, really, truly, like you said, a prayer, you know, in service of Hazen, you know, it really is, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
You bet.
Okay, moving down to seven A, I hope I didn't cut anybody off.
You're fine.
All right, seven, um, chapter eighteen floodplain ordinance update. Monty, you wanna talk about that, please?
Uh, as we had discussed late last fall, I met with the representative from the state board, and he got me the updated Model D floodplain ordinance, that is part of our city ordinance. It basically, the only change is that for non-residential construction, the elevation above base flood is supposed to be two feet now instead of one for hug certifications and stuff. So that's basically the only change in the ordinance. But, since it is part of the ordinance, it does require two readings and approval.
Okay, will this be read number one?
Yes, it will be reading number one.
Okay, can you, can you just see a motion in a second for this? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the, uh, chapter eighteen Model D floodplain ordinance.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
Second by the Sterns?
Yeah.
Yes.
Discussion.
Monty, so that means then if we go through and keep going, well, anybody that's below that two feet currently, will they just be grandfathered in, or?
Yeah, it's, this is only for new construction stuff.
Okay.
It's just non-residential, your garages and stuff like that.
Roll call.
Pat.
Hello.
Aye. Stern.
Aye.
Fulkert.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Obenauer.
Aye, motion carried, thank you, Monty. All right, uh, fire ordinance, fireworks ordinance discussion, um, let me pull my, pull my form up here, can we quick, sorry? Um, what's, what's the discussion? Do we have anybody from the community that, that needs to talk to Monty?
I, like I said in the notes, I just put this on there because it was brought up, and there was never any real action taken, whether we're changing or just leaving it. So I put it back on the agenda, if there are gonna be changes, it would require the two readings and approval and any publication regarding penalties, if there's any. So I just thought we'd get the ball rolling again, if there's gonna be any changes, we do it now, or we just leave it as it is. But yes, there is, my understanding is, Ms. Schmidt is here to discuss this.
Okay, um, so we did, we did make some changes, but we, last year, but we did not approve it, is that correct?
There were no changes recommended at that time.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you. Um, the only thing I, I know is, when I saw this on here, I got ahold of Chris Crowsey, and I just told her, you know, the last three years, our vendor, or the vendor that's coming out, wants to get something done on the eleventh hour, and it just is very, uh, unprofessional, and I told her to contact him, and it sounds like, it sounds like the, um, people in Beulah that run theirs, uh, their fireworks are the ones that have been just doing it in Hazen. Um, I think it's Camber and Kathy Leonard, I think, I can't remember the names, but, uh, um, you know, last year, I know we talked about this quite a bit as well, and it seemed, you know, we, we did, we, obviously, we had concerns from some people about, uh, the number of days we had, the hours during the day, how, you know, sell, it can be selling, sell fireworks up whenever, and Mother Nature is the other thing that we, you know, a lot of it banks on too. So, um, I don't know, any commissioners have any thoughts they wanna offer, and then we'll let, uh, Mary Ann speak, but, um, any, any thoughts from the commission? I'm in favor of leaving alone and not changing, I think myself. We, two, two or three years ago, we, we cut down the days and the time, timelines during the day.
I mean, I think, and, this is Jesse, Jerry, um, I mean, I, I honestly think that that five hundred dollar fine is, is, is too steep, and because it's too steep, that, that kinda, like I, I, like when I worked for the city here, I had a hard time, you know, actually enforcing it by, via citation or something like that, because that fine was just, I, I couldn't, you know, after discretion, I didn't see that fit the, the crime. You know, versus it potentially being like that hundred dollar fine, you know, the, the second or subsequent offense or something like that, being bumped up each time. I mean, I, I would be in favor of that in lieu of some kind of other drastic overhaul at this point, just to kind of see.
But it's not a five hundred dollar fine, it's not to exceed five hundred dollars. So it's lumping commercial sales and private stuff all into one. Otherwise, you'd have to split it up into two different.
So that would be, so that would be citing it right into court then?
Basically, yeah.
So you.
The way I.
You'd have to appear, and then they would have to see the judge, and the judge would have to determine what the fine would be.
Otherwise, you'd have to have it structured between, you know, say the commercial vendors have a different rate than Mark just letting them off at his house.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
You know, because I would think that commercials not obeying what it's supposed to be would be quite a bit more steep than Mark letting them off ten minutes after.
Right.
The time limit, you know?
Okay, I, I can understand.
The discretion is, the, the, the discretion is hard, it's almost like, I hate to bring up the word, um, jailbreak, but, um, it's hard, it's hard, it's hard to enforce, it really is, and, you know, that's, that's, you know, so.
And then it seems like it just goes to the wayside, unfortunately, and that's, I think that's, that's part of the issue, like, if, if we're spread that it's actually being enforced via whatever kind of monetary reminder to abide by the rules, I, I, I mean, that stuff kind of catches on quickly, in my experience.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we, can we do something like we publicized after our street cleanup week? That we put on social media, we do something like that? And blast it out there, Monty, or not, or?
I mean, I, I feel, I feel like we're posting, I feel like it is blasted, whether it be via mouth through the community or via post, I mean, it is, it is what it is. People, people know that it's again, people know that eleven o'clock is quitting time, but they also know that if they're shooting off at eleven oh five, there's just gonna be a cop that's just gonna come by and say, no, no, even though that they've been told this every single year, every single time, or several times throughout a season, it's just the same thing, because they know nothing.
But at the same time, where are you citing them for?
The way it was, the, the way that we, I understood it when I worked for the police department was, it was, and I believe it came up in tracks, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, it's not, it applied that automatic five hundred dollars. When you, when you.
If you put it in track?
If you put it in tracks, or it auto-populates the bond or the fine, I can't remember, but I feel like it was something to that extent, and that, that falls on me for not thoroughly reading, reading the ordinance, so maybe wrong. However, on the same note, if we're citing tens of people into court, I mean, is that gonna, I mean, obviously, we'll make time for it, right? But what kind of issues is that gonna pose?
You know, I remember when we talked about this last year, you, you made, made it sound like it's kind of the same people repeatedly.
It is, but then you get the one or two different ones every year that this.
But your one or two is when you give the warning out, the, hey, don't do it again, the repeat offenders, when you send them in front of the judge, and the, the judge deem what the fine's gonna be.
Yeah.
You know, you do it four times in a year, obviously, it's gonna be a lot steeper.
And, and that makes sense too, the, the, part of the issue is also, it's like that mob mentality thing, like it's eleven oh five, but I'm hearing other people firing off fireworks, so therefore it must be okay, kind of thing, too. So, I mean, I, I, I don't know, I, all I do know is that it's a, it's a continual problem, the fireworks. I, I wish more people would show up to the meetings and voice their concerns, unfortunately. Um, that's just not the case, like people just whispering their, their concerns about it constantly, and I mean, that's where I'm at with it.
One other, I have that, I'm seeing yours remembered, so the fourth slide falls on a Friday, which means fireworks are permitted from the second to the fifth, so it's Wednesday through Saturday. So this, this reminder of that part as well. And now, there was twenty twenty ones last time we voted on this. Any other commissioners have any other thoughts, uh, so we're, we, we leave it at no more than five hundred dollars, about what we're hearing? You guys would wanna stay with no more than five hundred, or do you wanna change that?
So basically, as far as for the direction of the police department, it's gonna be just cited in the court? Is that am I correct?
Okay, okay.
That's essentially what it would be, is you would end up citing it into court, and that can be a good thing, that can be a bad thing. The one thing that I was generally concerned on that is, it puts both city prosecutor and city judge in a difficult position of knowing how serious do you treat something like this, where when you say first time offenses, and I'm making up a number here, seventy-five dollars, and a second time offense is two hundred fifty dollars, then we start to get a gauge from, okay, this is how serious the city looks at this, as opposed to when you say up to five hundred dollars, I've seen judges say, all right, that sounds like a fifteen dollar fine to me for the first offense, I hope we don't see you again. And it's like, well, you just spent a, a half hour of a time for the city attorney preparing for appearing in court, and you've gone backwards significantly versus a specific fine. Um, that would be my only critique on that, is I think that there is generally a movement towards asking commissions and councils to have a specific dollar amount, so that when we're in court, we know exactly how the city feels about some of these violations for a first offense, a second offense, a third offense, and each subsequent offense there. Um, because I think it really can provide us a lot of clarity, and it can really reduce the amount of court time.
That, and, and that's basically, yeah, that's kind of where I'm coming from, having that bond or fine schedule kind of set up.
He just made it sound better.
He did, he said it like a lawyer, and I can't design a.
So you basically, if you went that direction, we could write.
All of what Mark said.
If you write a hundred dollar first offense, then you gotta keep track of offenses.
Well, but that's.
It's already a.
It's already a.
It's a.
It's a.
Yeah.
So you just, you could write a hundred dollar ticket right there on the spot for the first offense, right, Jim?
I do like that, but I would like to see a, you know, something for commercial.
To just split it up.
A different pay, uh, fee rate for commercial versus.
Or, or do we, yeah.
Private.
Or do we even mess with that? Do we even mess with, just have it open to the up to five hundred for commercial?
Or just.
And then just have that bond or fine schedule for.
Yeah, residential.
Yeah, for private parties.
Yeah, I would be okay with that.
So now, what do we set it at? We set one, two, three, four, five?
So it's doubled, right? It's one hundred, or what, what is the, what is the, uh, the fines for, like dog of large, is it a hundred dollars for first offense and two, then four? I can't remember if it doubles or.
For what?
For dog. For dog orders, like dog of large.
Twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, see the judge.
Okay, I thought it was on that double, maybe I'm thinking of other municipalities.
Yeah, that's the name of it.
Okay, I'm thinking of other cities, um.
For a lot of the cities that I represent, and not that you guys have to follow suit with them, we have done, um, for similar types of offenses, hundred fifty, three hundred, five hundred. That doesn't mean you guys have to track like that, but enough to where they got some skin in the game, um, but not so much that it's like, ooh, damn, that one, that okay was a real sting. Um, you know, you guys, in the fireworks context, I mean, I could certainly see backing it off to say, and I'm making up a number here, seventy-five dollars, to say, we don't wanna see you again, this is enough to get the message, but then have that second offense couple some real sting, because then they've really been warned. Um, that's up to you guys in that respect, but, um, usually I try to urge cities to do, uh, a firm warning with a fine, so that the officers aren't like, God, I really don't wanna give them a three hundred dollar fine here. I, I think it's a lot easier for an officer to give a ticket that's, say, seventy-five to a hundred and fifty than it is for them to say, here's your three hundred dollar ticket for your first offense.
How about one?
I like that.
How about one, two, fifty, and five?
One hundred, two hundred fifty, and five hundred?
I was thinking three, three stages, because.
And that makes.
Again, I just threw out five, you know, one, two, three, four, five. Two hundred dollars might not be a lot to somebody, a hundred dollars might be a lot to somebody, but three strikes and you're out scenario, five hundred, two fifty and five hundred, that's, that's a pretty big sting. Monty?
I have a question for Mark, then, do we just make that as part of a separate penalty section for violation of these hours? First offenses, whatever they decide.
That's what I would do, yeah, yeah, I can use some language on that, if you.
You leave the other five hundred, so anything that doesn't fall under that section.
That's what I would do.
Okay. Could, should we up that five hundred though to a thousand?
Is that within our.
Yeah, then that, you know, five hundred to a business, a commercial business, is kind of just a slap on the wrist too.
Yeah.
You know, that, the commercial would go in front of the municipal judge.
That's about.
He could decide how severe that penalty should be, you know?
So make it up to one thousand?
Up to one thousand and stay with the fifty B.
Does that every offense? Or is there any language as far as subsequent, potential subsequent offenses? Or is it just gonna be in front of a judge each time up to a thousand dollars?
Let's see, just leave it up to one.
Not when you make the motion.
You've got the option then as well for the revocation of any permit too.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there is, there is some remedies there for a commercial. You have a good point.
So I make a motion that we go with residential, the one hundred, two fifty and five hundred stages. And we go from five hundred on the nine point zero five zero eight penalty to a thousand.
Hey, we have motion by Act.
I will second that.
May I second by Wade Rick? Question.
That way we can.
Roll call.
Oh, do you, you guys wanna?
Very good.
Somebody in the.
Yeah, Jerry, we got Mary and Spitt here too to talk as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll still get to her. We're not, we're not done. We'll get, we'll see the grand act.
Do that, Jim, we can bang a ticket out every time, right? If you get to that third offense.
But it's gonna be like the, uh, dogs where every year it starts over?
I think so.
Yeah, I think it'll be different each season.
Yeah, I'd be, I would say in a fireworks season.
Basically, you're looking at the five hundred dollars for the third offense and any subsequent offense.
Right.
And then.
Does it do a calendar year just because of the New Year's Eve?
Yeah, it'd be the calendar year, but then in two thousand.
Yeah.
So yeah, you could get the five hundred dollar ticket on the night before.
Yeah, you could, you could get it twice.
A hundred, yeah.
Do I have to amend that, Monty, or how do you?
Do you wanna make it the calendar year from January one, or do you wanna start July one? Cause you could start, what is it, June twenty-ninth technically, you could start.
You could start that and go with town.
For you to track as an officer.
It just, you can track it, that's no problem.
Yeah, cause vehicles are service or just tracks itself, just make it the calendar.
Vehicles are service.
Calendar year would cover everything, right?
Yeah. It just starts over January one, you know, at midnight on December thirty-first.
It covers Fourth of July weekend, it covers New Years.
Yeah.
And anything in between.
Yeah. One, one guy could get a break if he's doing it the thirty-first. That was his first offense, now the first is his first offense again.
Consider your New Year's, your New Year's gift.
My, do you have that changed, or do you want Jason to redo his motion?
I have a motion per calendar year that the violation of nine oh five oh seven will be. One hundred dollars first offense, two hundred fifty dollars second offense, five hundred dollars third, and subsequent offenses. Penalty for section nine oh five oh eight will be a max, up to a maximum of one thousand dollars.
In the calendar year.
Okay, we have, that's our motion, and then we have, the second was two?
Wade Rick.
Wade Rick.
Great. Okay, any more discussion on that, on the penalty?
Just, so there's the distinction between a private party committing an offense and, and the, uh.
Not necessarily a private party, it's for any violation of the discharge portion of the ordinance.
Discharge, discharge, okay, alright. That works.
Same. Alright, roll call.
Act.
Aye.
Wade Rick, aye. Oakert.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Open hour.
Hi, voting Jerry. I wanna direct you guys' attention to page two of the ordinance under nine point zero five zero six. I'm sorry, no, then one below it, nine zero five zero seven. And this one really irks the crap out of me on the fifth of July, when you drive around. And you see in front of houses that look like ten boxes of, um. Cardboard just exploded where people in front of their homes, and then they leave it. And it goes down to the, you know, the rain washes it down, or, or we wait for street sweepers. I really would love to see, um. Whoever's lucky enough or unlucky enough, um, you know, to be on duty as our, um, police officers that. We're patrolling and, you know, you see, I can name three or four spots last year where it's, people just don't give a shit, don't care about, um. That they leave a gigantic mess in the middle of the road. Um, I think we really need to enforce that and we need to get beyond that because, you know, public roadways is. You know, it's a huge mess and it puts more burden on our public works too. So, I know, I don't, I don't wanna change anything, I just wanna highlight that and. Is Officer Wolf there?
Yes.
Okay, so. One enforcement of that, that whoever's driving around, they can really pay some attention to that stuff happening, I really, really appreciate that. Let's keep things, but it's littering, maybe if you're throwing trash all over the streets and whatever, so.
Yeah, Jerry, Jim said that. Jim said that, they can charge with littering.
Okay.
The one thing we have, Jerry, is if it's stacked up next to the curb, that is a smart thing.
Versus putting it in up.
Because we have had houses burned down in town because they piled them up next to the house. And they re-lit in the middle of the night and ran up the side of the house and then.
The one right here.
So, yeah, I agree with you leaving it out in the middle of the street. But if it's stacked up alongside the curb, to me, that's actually the smartest thing.
Then they clean it up the next day. Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah. But don't leave it there for the city to clean it up.
No, I agree with you on that.
Can you scroll up a little bit, Monty? Because I, I do have the heartburn then with, with the way one is written there, with the discharge of fireworks is prohibited in any public place, including public roadways, I mean, so people are just gonna. Technically, everybody in town is violating that ordinance by shooting off in the streets. I mean, is that something that we're just gonna, is that something that we wanna revisit as far as?
It, it's a discretion thing, and you know what I mean, yes, but there's like twenty-five or thirty. You know, things laying in the middle.
Oh, no, a hundred percent with that. I, I one hundred percent with you on that, it's, it's like navigating a minefield some years, it's, it's pretty ridiculous at points.
But if they're shooting off in the roadway, is that not a violation?
That's what I'm getting at, like, that's part of the issue is because.
If they're in the middle of the roadway, that is a violation.
Right.
The other thing I wanted to just ask and highlight is, I know in the past we've had many places that banned fireworks because things are dry. That, in that decision, does that fall on our police, our fire chief? I know it's not Commerce County Emergency Manager, but is, who, who makes that final call for us? Is that, is that our chief?
Yes, our fire chief will do that. Like several, couple of years ago when it was extremely dry. Pretty much everybody in Mercer County banned them except for he. And we had two really small grass fires, which that is a normal year for us even when it is wet. So.
But doesn't the fireworks fall under the burn ban declaration for the county too? Including all municipalities, cause there was a section, I remember, that included the fireworks.
It depends on which stage the county puts it on, yes.
Stage of the burn ban. And that changes from day to day.
Uh, yes, it can, depending on how their decoration is worded.
Yeah.
Fair and done ranting. Uh, Mary Ann, you have, you have some, you have some comment?
Yes and no. I actually just found out about this, um, when I got home from work about five o'clock, so I haven't had any time to prepare. I just found out that fireworks was on the agenda. I was the one that brought it to the commission three years ago when you changed it from nine days of fireworks to four. So I do appreciate that. I still personally think four is too many, and I know you've disagreed with me on that, Jerry. Uh, but, I mean, we don't typically celebrate holidays for four days in a row. Especially holidays that affect all the people around us. If you wanna celebrate Christmas on January seventh, you're welcome to do that, but it doesn't affect everybody around you. So it still bothers me that we have four days. Um, I, I talked at that time about how, uh, fireworks affect different people negatively. For me, it's my dogs. My dogs are literally scared to death, and I get that I am one person, you're not gonna make a rule change. I'm not the only person whose dogs are scared of fireworks. That is a major issue, whether they're willing to come to the commission meeting or not. Um, and let, allowing fireworks to off at ten o'clock in the morning is a real issue because I'm not there with my dogs. I work during the day. So if we do fireworks, you know, the Fourth of July and maybe the day before or after or something, I can at least manage that. I can't stay home for four days in a row, and I can't go stay in a hotel some, in some city that doesn't allow fireworks for four days in a row. It's just not feasible. Um, so, uh, when fireworks go off at ten o'clock, I don't understand why we have to do fireworks at ten o'clock in the morning. Uh, if they're doing fireworks that you don't need it to be dark for, they can do that at five o'clock in the evening. When I can be home and have my dog drugged up and, and ready for it, but when it's like ninety-six hours in a row, they don't pretty much do fireworks. That is very difficult for people who don't manage fireworks well. Um, and I appreciate that you are gonna put some beef behind the fine. But it's really very difficult, and I'm sure the officers will tell you, to catch who's doing that when at twelve thirty in the morning, I finally get my dog to settle down. And we go upstairs and go to bed, and one AM does giant boom that sounds like the house next door exploded. Just one, just one boom that somebody has to do, but you're not gonna catch who did that. Nobody, I don't know who did it, even though it was probably in my neighborhood, I have no idea who it was. And by the time they all get there, they don't know who it was either. So it's just.
No, they don't.
It's just really difficult to manage, and I just think that four days is still a long time. When we, when you switched to four days three years ago, it was because Beulah did four days and they had it set up similar to this, that depending on when the Fourth of July. So that you could typically, so you can include a weekend in there. Um, and I heard after we did that, that Beulah was gonna go to two days. I didn't follow up on that. I have no idea if they did or not. I, I wish I had a little more time. Um, I, I don't remember who it was that was here a year ago, um, or last year, maybe Delon Moore, I'm not sure if that, okay. Uh, and he talked about the garbage that's in our yards. So you're talking about the garbage that's left for the street to clean up? That's the exact same issue Delon was talking about that's left for him to clean up. Okay, for all of us that don't do fireworks. I have nothing against fireworks. You can shoot them off. I don't personally like them. I don't care if people shoot off fireworks when I can be prepared for it, not just for four days in a row. Um, and, and the garbage is an issue, and you were basically saying that it's fine if they violate this part of the ordinance and shoot them off on the city street? Why do people do that? Cause they don't wanna shoot them off in their driveway? Like, nobody wants to shoot them off next to their house. Yeah, I get that. It's in your ordinance, so you're, you're basically saying they can violate this part of the ordinance. Or we're gonna pull a little more beef on this part of the ordinance. So I just feel that at that time, um, some, one of you said, and I, I truly don't remember who it was. Said that if only one person is coming to the meeting, it must not be an issue with people. That was said after Delon was here. It is an issue with people. Maybe Delon didn't tell anybody who was coming to the meeting. I certainly didn't tell anybody tonight because I didn't know it was on the agenda until. You know, an hour before the meeting. So, those, those are my issues with it. I really truly wish that we could do just the Fourth of July for shooting off fireworks. I, if we have to do more than one day, I wish we did not start at ten o'clock in the morning. There's no reason that we have to be shooting off fireworks at ten o'clock in the morning. The Fourth of July is literally July fourth, is Independence Day. If you want to celebrate outside of that, you should do it in a place that doesn't affect every other person in town. So, that's, that's my soapbox, um, with the little time that I had to prepare for it, and so I'll just leave you with that.
Mary Ann, again, I have three bigger comments. Thanks for coming. I agree with about eighty percent of what you have to say. Um, I, 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 I don't do fireworks. My kids didn't do fireworks. When I mow the week after the Fourth of July, mowing up paper and bottle rocket sticks and everything else, yeah, I, I, I get that as well, um. So thanks for coming. Does any commissioners wanna comment or, or propose something different?
Hi, this is Jesse again, Jerry. I, I just, I do still have, I have to bolster with what Mary Ann said, the, the. Nine point oh five oh seven, section one there, I mean, just the fact that it states that it's. We're prohibiting individuals from lighting fireworks off on public roadways. Yes, it is the safest place. Obviously, I'd rather have somebody do it in the middle of a asphalt roadway than up in their lawn. And starting their house on fire or all that stuff. However, I, I, I just don't like that. We're just gonna just basically ignore this ordinance. If anything, I would, I don't know if we could do away with, uh, public roadways in the literature of this. Just because, it just, it doesn't make sense to me to have this on the books as, as a violation of our ordinance. But yet, we're gonna just let it slide and then, you know, go ham on another section of an ordinance. Yeah, it's just, it, it doesn't make sense to me.
Anybody else, or is that a motion, or anybody else wanna chime in?
I would make a motion to straighten the words "public roadways" from nine point oh five oh seven subsection one.
Okay, we got a motion by Oakert.
Second.
That's stern?
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion and we got a second by AC, discussion. Roll call.
Oakert.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Act.
Aye.
Wade Rick.
Aye.
Open hour.
May. Motion passed. Alright, but now, now we just need to clean step up and, after people which, I don't, it's probably the deal I guess. Thank you, I appreciate your comment.
Can I just ask?
Any help?
If you're not going to make any changes to the length of days or the length of time in a day. What is the reason for that? Why, why are you choosing not to do that? Not, not just Jerry, but any of you, why, why, why are you choosing not to even discuss that, or what's your reason?
Part of it, to me, has to do with our, what our community works. We have a ton of shift workers in this community. So the Fourth of July may not work for them, Mary Ann, and you're aware of the shift workers, so.
But at the same argument, we can't have fireworks going off at all hours for four days in a row because we have shift workers. I mean, you, can you play that argument both directions?
Not necessarily.
Uh, my, my comment, my comment is last year I worked midnight, which is eleven PM until seven AM. I, I didn't get a ton of sleep that night, but I put earbuds in. I, I played some light music. I did what I could, I knew it was gonna be there. And I don't, I deal with stuff, and that's what I did, so I, I'm not saying that works for everybody or every animal or every veteran that PTSD or anything, but. Yeah, I, I, I just, I just hate another rule, another law, taking away another, it feels like you're taking away personal rights. So that's why, that's why, I, why do not. Change that, Mary Ann, so I know it's, it's not what everybody thinks, but that's how I feel.
I don't know how many, I know Casey used to sell fireworks. How many in our community sell fireworks now? Is there one or two?
Just been one.
Just one for several years. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of in that same boat. Um, you know, I put cotton balls in my ears. Um, and I get the animal side of things, I really do. We were fortunate enough, when our dog was alive, he would go and pick them up when they were lit, so I, I, I get that, Mary Ann. I've had dogs before that were totally scared, got so scared.
My dog goes through windows, so it's, I mean, I, I totally get that not all animals are that extreme, mine happens to be. But, but there are a lot of animals that, that affects.
And I think the, if we're able to. Implement the, this, this new fine fee structure, I think if we were able to do more consistent enforcement about this, about this problem. More consistently throughout, and it becomes kind of a standard, I think that's gonna cut down on a lot of it. I think trying that first. Versus, I don't wanna call it going to the extreme because I can empathize with what you're saying, but going even further into the. but going even further into the realm of narrowing things and limiting people's ability to shoot off fireworks. Like, because I, part of me agrees with Dustin in the fact that, you know, not everybody's able to do it on the one day, shoot off fireworks and stuff. I hate fireworks too. I am to that point, Liberty, my German Shepherd, holy smokes. And we have to medicate her too and it's a lot. But I'm a firm believer, if we're able to do firm inconsistent enforcement of the ordinance, if we're able to change it to what we're wanting to as far as the schedule, the fine or bond schedule for it, I truly believe that might curtail some of these problems.
I hope so, but...
And if not, I think that's something to just like try this first and then, and I know it just seems like it's probably getting pushed further and further down the road and it's an ongoing issue for, for some of us, but I think if we're able to do that and if we don't see results by next year, revisit, revisit it. I mean, I, I don't know if that makes any sense or not, but...
No, it makes sense. I, I mean, but I also think you personally and Jim know that it's, it's hard to catch anybody doing that.
I can be, yeah.
Yeah. So, and there are many cities in North Dakota that don't allow any fireworks. So, okay, can I ask you your turn?
I would just like to follow, understand what the state laws are, you know, and those are in like nine days. And then too, I was told, I guess, that we made a charter and stuff because of the dogs. Well, what happened at my place is dogs bark all the time, they bark all night long, you know? And then I'm supposed to adapt to that, you know? So I mean, so I mean, I don't see a problem with, I guess, nine days out of it.
I see a major problem with nine days, lighting up fireworks.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marion. All right, moving on, you can get up. Down to eight eighth site authorization for eight of the winners' horse.
It's me again, Jerry.
Do you have someone waiting?
Twenty, what is my twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh year in a row of doing this?
Yeah, I thought you were gonna retire like two years ago.
No, that was only, well, that was a long story. I, there was a time, about six months there where we thought there was gonna be some, that I was gonna have some extreme medical problems. Turned out, I didn't.
Which is good.
Which is a good thing and so, because I didn't have to quit, I don't want to. I need something to do and this job's not strenuous, you know, and so far I can still mentally handle it. So here I am again, one more year, asking for your approval for site authorizations for the four bars in the east. No changes, everything's, we're requesting the same thing we have for the last few years. Any questions for you guys?
Not me.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Think we get a motion approved?
Second.
And a second, discussion. Rule call.
Wade. Aye. Okert.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenour.
All right, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you, one more time. I'll pick them up in a few minutes.
All right, down to water, water steward.
The only thing I got, Jerry, is we started day one of, as the PW workers say, hell week. Cleanup week, sorry. Everything seems to be going fine, Dave?
Yes?
Okay. That's all I really have at this time, Jerry.
Okay. All right. Name from Dave?
Nope.
Uh, we've kinda skipped water and steward, Commissioner Stern.
Oh, sorry. I jumped ahead.
Between you and Jerry just skipping it really, I just...
Sorry, Casey.
You know, we're doing stuff with the garbage truck there, there, I guess, in this morning. You know, hearing stuff develop, I guess, a problem with the transmission. Freedom, uh... Oh, the freedom, I guess, is working on it right now. It sounds like it's, it's maybe, maybe, I guess, a problem, I guess, uh... Maybe, I guess, maybe, I guess, maybe then, I guess, uh, silanoid, I guess. And then two, then two, on the filters and the transmission, there are two, I guess, was all of this metal, two, I guess aluminum, so. So anyway, I guess that's where we're at right now. I guess I would just like to see us, you know, you know, not, I guess, replace the transmission, you know, just try to get it to work, but I don't know, Dave, I guess, if you have some other ideas?
All the more time, because he was pulling the pan and bell body, depending on how contaminated these silanoids are in bell body, it could be self-destructing, it could be, we need a new transmission, it could be just simplest cleaning of bell body, putting it back together. We're just not gonna know until he gets this part of the transmission repaired tomorrow morning.
Yeah, Allison?
Yes.
Five thousand or six thousand, something like that?
So it could be, he worked on it all day today, he did pressure tests and road tests and I did some diagnostics last week, he did a bunch this week, a lot of that stuff is checking out. It might be leaning more that it's having a catastrophic failure internally or something. I'll know more than that.
Very bad time for that, yeah.
Yeah. Well, anytime's a bad time if you have a bad transmission, but... So I really like visiting Casey, I don't know what kind of valve or monitor ceiling to put on it. I mean, we're kinda stuck, you can't condemn a truck that's not very old if the transmission is bad. I mean, that's...
Well, I don't wanna jump the gun and just throw a transmission.
No, no, I don't either, I'm waiting for the rest of the diagnosis, but...
Correct, and then I would, I would even say, clean it up, throw back together some new fluid in it and test it for a little bit. Use it for a few days and maybe cut the filters back apart again and see what's in there, you know?
Because right now it's down to first gear only, it's the only gear we got.
So you might know if you throw it back together.
If you put it back together, yeah.
Couple hundred dollars worth of...
I guess we'll find out more when he gets more of a department and see what's wrong with it.
How's the, how's the whole garbage truck running?
Knock on wood, it's working good for now.
Okay, all right. Let me have backup.
So Jerry, so then, I guess, with that, then I move, I guess, that we spend, I guess, no more than, no more than, I guess, a three thousand dollars.
Good idea, motion by Stern.
I'm just repairing.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Rule call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Okert.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Omenour.
Aye, motion carried. Anything else, Casey?
Yeah, Jerry, um, now then two, you know, I guess, you know, and two and stuff, over on the dumpster, I guess, like rentals, I guess, that we do.
Yep.
You know, speaking with Dave, some, some there and stuff, it sounds like the rentals that we do, even the materials, I guess, that aren't supposed to be, be then, I guess, be then, I guess, uh, thrown in the dumpster, they are getting thrown in there. And after that, the crews will, I guess, move it then like out of the dumpster and after that it'll get back in there. So then,
Okay.
So two, you don't know if the board, 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 they just wants to get rid of, I guess, the rentals or, or I don't know what kind of plan of attack that we guess we wanna have.
And you're talking about the bigger, the big metal dumpsters, correct?
No, it's the ones that say you buy a house and then you call City Hall, you wanna rent the dumpsters so you can clean out the house. And it's not the household garbage only and it's always stuff that shouldn't be in there and we're forever dragging this stuff out because that all has to go into a different cell at the landfill. And it's just, nobody listens. They always say, yeah, we won't put anything but household garbage in there and we end up with mattresses, metal, stuff that we have to physically deal with that can't go in the back of the truck. It's not our livelihood and it's, it's always abused or whatever, just eliminate that part. I know outfit and Beulah rents out these regular roll offs for people that clean our houses. Refer people to that and just eliminate that problem for us. I'm just gonna get hurt dragging this stuff out of these dumpsters.
I agree with you.
Do we have a lot of rentals, Monty?
No.
I make a motion, I make a motion, make a motion that we get rid of the rental dumpsters that we were talking about. And refer them to...
I mean, just like J and S and Beulah or whoever rental has.
Roll off companies.
You don't have to refer.
There we go, this is bad.
Just say no.
Just say no.
Just get rid of it.
Just say no. Okay.
Second.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. You know, if, if they're actually gonna get into the rental dumpsters, are they gonna eventually get into the non-rental ones? And I, I don't know if it's simple or if it's a pain in the butt, but why can't we have our guys that are on a garbage truck, you know, have pre-made stickers and put it on there when saying, we won't accept this, you need to call City Hall or and we'll give you a contact number, but this is not, this is not acceptable, you know? Uh, Monty, how many rentals do you think we would have in a year's time? A dozen? Two dozen?
A dozen or, dozen or less.
Okay, then, 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 okay, then scratch that, I, I, I agree with you guys. Any more discussion? Rule call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Okert.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Omenour.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. Anything else, Casey?
Nope. No, Jerry, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Um, Jason or Dave, anything else?
No, sorry I jumped in line there, Casey.
Oh, that's fine. Bro.
Shocker.
Finance, busting.
Um, I believe we have both of those job descriptions posted, right? For Peg's position, director, she was, her last day was on the thirtieth and then Ms. McConnell's last day will be the school year, I believe, I remember.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second coming up here, so we got both those openings posted. Now, that's a, even if somewhere we're, if we're to hire or something, I ask people to front two weeks, something like that, just to make sure I understood that correctly. Okay, and then something to be thinking about, I don't think it'll affect us as much, but we're looking at potentially wanting to replace that two thousand thirteen plus, having some issues with that. And, um, I cannot remember the process of doing that because we get a lot, we get a large amount of funding for that through the, through the state.
We have to be advertising for PEGs and then go from there.
Yeah.
It'd be profitable from the state.
The state or the federal?
I get those two mixed up, that's why I'm like hesitant on, yeah. So yeah, that's something to be, that I just wanna put in everybody's ear. Um, Monty, do you have anything?
No.
Does, Jesse, does the two existing employees show interest?
I have not gotten that, but I, I do intend to.
Just was curious.
And that is all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Please fire forestry.
All right, I got a couple things. Fire department, we'll start with them because that'll be easier. It's extremely dry out there, we thought. An okay-sized fire yesterday, we got pretty lucky on that, that once it got into the grass, it kinda shut itself down, to be honest.
About his own size.
Yeah, it was roughly a hundred and twenty acres, don't quote me on that, that's just our guess. It was pretty miserable, but we had every unit except for pick city and county out there. Plus, we had units out of Dickinson come up to help us. We had county tankers out there, farmers were bringing us water, which helped huge. We just wanna make everybody aware of it.
Awesome.
Uh, it's, it's dry and we got lucky on that one. Police department, uh, we got some run reports for, um, April.
Um, Mr. Wade.
Go ahead.
Commander, I'm sorry, is there, do we have a burn band on yet, is it so dry or not yet?
Yes, county does have a burn band on.
Okay.
Uh, it's a multi-stage type burn band. So you have to look at the county's page and then you gotta look at the state fire index rating to determine what it's in. Uh, when we're in a red flag warning, which I know we were yesterday, it was a complete and total band.
Even when you, even when you go to the website, it compels you to contact your local emergency manager too. So, yeah, like with the sheriff's office, just call dispatch, they'll be able to let anybody know where that's at.
Control burns right now are, uh, not an option anymore. When it goes to campfires, I think that's kinda limited too. Uh, you can, but it has to be in a basically approved site, if I remember right. Smoking outside, you gotta basically be on no vegetation, you know? And it gets progressively worse as you go up to the point where you can't even use propane grills outside if it gets bad enough.
Did that fire start, I'm assuming from just the farmer, it'd be the, unimplement hit a rock, sparked a fire, I'm guessing?
It was a tractor, he was seating, it was a quad track. Um, and then believe it was a buildup of, um, old corn stalks and stuff in between the track and the frame and it got hot and lit up. He did have two fire extinguishers on, he expelled them, called the neighbor, which brought over a couple more fire extinguishers, expelled them, in a case like that, there's no way they would've got it out with extinguishers. We were struggling and we had lots of water, you know? It was very weird the way that corn, old cornfield acted. We, we knock it out and it just relight itself. But when you're dealing with fifty mile an hour winds,
Well, yeah.
if you don't get every little ember out.
Those are the same directions in the middle, that kinda...
I don't believe it did. Like I said, it acted very weird because it was actually at one point burning into a fifty mile an hour wind, which you wouldn't think would happen. And it progressively just kept getting wider and wider and we, until we got a disc there, it was pretty hard to control it. Once he started disking up the fire line, it kinda shut that down then. Just a bunch of mop up in the trees, which was time consuming.
Well, good job, guys.
Now that we're back on the fire, we did get a little more nailed down on what the SEBA stuff is gonna cost. We're not anywhere close to finalizing that, but it's looking like it's gonna be north of a hundred and sixty thousand to replace what we currently have. It's gonna be a large bill, no matter how we go about it. It's gonna be spendy, so hopefully we can find some grants or donations or something to help out. I did start looking for different grant stuff, there is stuff out there, we just gotta finalize, you know, what we're gonna go with and how much we're gonna go with and get a better description of price before I can start writing through those grants or requesting funding for people to help. I think that's all I got on forestry. Police side, run reports, Sergeant Melberg had sixty-eight. Officer Melberg had fifty-five and Chief Wolf had fifty for the month of April. It does appear that AJ quit. According to Chief Wolf, he turned in his badge, his keys, his radio, all that stuff with no notice or nothing. It was just on the desk in there. So I believe that he's done with. So, I believe that he's done with. Um, but we got the new guy started. Uh, a lot already on that more, Jim.
He's got his limited license now, so he is in uniform.
Gotcha.
We're trying to get him trained in on the different shifts. So, hopefully when he's done with the academy, we don't have to spend too much FTO on with him.
Perfect. And then he's like that. June the second, I believe he starts now.
So, we didn't, everything through the post board, we're just waiting for him to verify that he's in the class.
Gotcha.
But the post board is in that midst of switching from post board to that Genesis thing now, cause you can't keep track of post board hours anymore. To do a post board, it has to be through the Genesis.
Good.
Um, a lot of red tape, but it's, I'm pretty sure he's in. We just try and get on to the Jessica now to confirm, like I said, with them, in between, we haven't been able to contact or return phone calls or anything else.
Okay. Um, and after last meeting, I did talk to Anthony about her truck. It's in the process, but a few of the parts showed up broken, but they are still saying it's still on schedule. So, hopefully they're open either this month or sometime next month will have it. So, I know Tony's really hoping to have it here by touch of truck, this seems to be pretty proud of that truck. Then we got the, the, uh, towing ordinance.
Not necessarily ordinance, it's just part of the police department policy. We've discussed many times about charging storage fees for vehicles that go into impound. This will implement those fees, basically, this whole last paragraph, the impound fee of a hundred dollars plus ten dollars per day for days one through fourteen. Thirty dollars per day, starting on the fifteenth day that they're still in impound.
So, I do.
Day with me, with.
I do like that, but I think it should be day two through fourteen. So, you get your initial hundred dollars for the first day and then starting the second day, you would start your ten dollars per day. Otherwise, it's a hundred and ten dollars initially. So, with that change, I would like to make a motion to approve this. Can I reserve it?
Dave, we got a motion by Wedrick.
Second.
Second by Ha, discussion.
So, is there a difference section? Is there anywhere stated, like if the fees for the impound of vehicle? If the accrued fees add up to more than what the vehicle's worth?
That would be under the abandoned portion.
That's the, okay.
Under, under ordinance.
Under the ordinance.
You'd be having the abandoned vehicles.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Jim, do you have?
Hey, we have a motion and second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Wedrick.
Aye.
Ha.
Aye.
Fulkert.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenour.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, HCD, is my brother there?
Yep.
Yes, he is.
Yeah.
Did you have anything to add, Jim?
Dave?
Did you have anything to add?
No.
I think the most.
Sorry, thank you.
The most important thing that I think would be interesting to the commissioners.
Myra, can you get closer? I can't hear you.
Sure, I can.
She's over in the corner whispering like a field mouse.
Yeah. Trying to catch up on the emails that I, I'll have to use a different email provider, so. Um, a bunch of us, well, yeah, went from Big City and Buster and Antimette, Angie, who else? But I guess maybe that's it. I mean, uh, we went to the tourism conference in Minot. Really, really a good conference and I can't, I can't believe what a good job Minot did. I wish we could do something similar. We took a tour of their downtown and on a smaller scale, we have a little bit of that with the art downtown, they're doing that, then they're doing tours of it too. With stopping at stores or, um, food establishments, which again, we can't do, we don't have enough. I walked down Main Street today and hadn't had lunch and I, oh, there's no place I can stop for lunch right now. But we did get some good ideas, a lot of it pertained to the city. Some of it was about our tourism guide, from our visitors guide, some, some good ideas about that. So, it was, it was a worthwhile conference. On a small scale, like maybe, you know, when we have Chalk Fest, if there's some little things we can do. The sad thing is that we need a hotel. To have anything here, we just need a hotel. Without it, it makes, you know, like I said, well, I guess we could go to Buella and get them, bring them over here for an event and then I guess make sure they have a place to eat and then take them back. But that's not a very good solution. So, we'll keep on working on a hotel, but it has been difficult. But I might finally have questions about it, but that was, it was, it was worthwhile, a few things we picked up, mostly, I mean.
All right, thank you, Myra.
Yep.
Um, nothing other than, other than I'm glad to be on this meeting with you guys, I'm feeling better. I guess again, we'll start tomorrow again and, uh, round three, so fingers crossed, we start things from the shrinkage. So, anyhow. Thank you. Um, old business, main street proven sidewalk shade structure. Monty, you wanna go through those bids and, and a little bit of what we're thinking?
Well, we've got estimates from three different contractors. Meisner Contracting, Winkler Construction and R and S, uh, Robelart Construction out of Bismarck. Uh, prices range anywhere from thirty-one thousand down to sixteen thousand, sixteen-five for the concrete work. Also contacted, uh, Grandal Recreation. They do the, uh, play structures and those types of things. For a shade type canopy to go in that area. His recommendation was the twenty by thirty canvas with four posts, as it would be, as it would be better suited and stronger to handle our wind. They do have a similar structure at the playground at Buella Elementary, which I was able to get off Google Earth. So, I guess it's, the ball's in your guys' court on how you want to proceed.
Monty, that, with that twenty by thirty structure, excuse me, would that be off to the side? Of where we're talking about putting our pipe in the ground for the tree or whatever?
Yeah, the idea would be to have it up, not centrally located, but off to one side or the other, so there would still be room for the city tree or whatever else we wanna do in there. By not doing the pipe in the ground for the tree and coming up with some other type of stand that can just be bolted down or whatever. You would actually save a little bit of room there. One of the suggestions was to just do a manhole type cover and then have the tree go in to the ground so many feet, so you wouldn't have to have the pipe sticking up. And that way, when you want to the tree, you just pull off the cover, put the tree in.
Tree in, yeah.
And then, over the summer, you can just set a table on top of that cover or whatever, so you don't have to worry about it being always off, so.
Yeah, for chirping haves or anything.
When you're gonna have a tree up there anyways, you're not gonna need the cover. Right, right. Yeah, that's the idea, the cover would come down in the fall before you do the tree.
I was just gonna ask that, I'm assuming we take it down in the fall?
And then, and then they can string lights on those poles, the poles will be sunk out of the concrete, those four poles, so they can string lights on those or do whatever they want for the holidays. Wanna go over the bid real quick, Mon- concrete with, um, we have, I know we have two that are fairly close, but.
Yeah, basically, Meisner's estimate to do the work with all the cleanup and everything is sixteen-five thirty-seven. Winkler's estimate is twenty thousand eight hundred for this, basically the same area. I know Dave meant with all of them as far as what we wanted done, so. So, they're basically identical.
Bits.
Bit, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the, 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 the can cover and the, the entire canopy, including the, the poles, is just shy of ten thousand, correct?
Well, yeah, without any shipping or any of that, and it, Larry from Grandal said that there, there should be no reason that our crew could not put that on once we've got, they'll give us the measurements to where the poles have to go, so they can be put in before the concrete is done, so.
So, that can all be done by the same contractor, that's, that obviously.
Yeah.
Sub, so like they said, not represented for this canopy thing?
No, he wouldn't have to, he would, he would just do the pricing based on, he would finalize the pricing based on what you wanna go with.
I got it.
Cause there are sizes, twenty by thirty is basically the biggest one that they, that they would recommend. I mean, you can go smaller, obviously, but then you gotta do more posts.
Sure.
I will make a motion to go with Winkler or, um, Meisner Construction and the twenty by thirty recommended canopy.
Motion by Wedrick.
Who else I can tell?
Second by Fulkert.
Oh, thank God, it's right in here. Second by Fulkert, uh, discussion.
Preferably not blue.
No, I'm thinking forest, old, yeah, yeah, probably forest green. Any more discussion?
Good point.
Wedrick.
Aye.
Fulkert.
Aye.
Ha.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenour.
Aye, with a big smile on his face. Thank you, guys.
And we will ask him to get started on this as quickly as he can.
Yes, I want that done for all store union, I mean, yeah.
You mean.
All right, um, well, hey, this is that way, three questions.
So, Monty, do you wanna chat about this a little bit?
Well, just some background. After we made the adjustments in February for the police department, there was a lot of discussion about where are we at on all the other departments. So, I did some research with the different entities of similar size to us. And we are not considerably low, but we are lower than a lot of them as far as our staff compensation. Our benefits are, are good. Uh, they do exceed most of the other places. So, I did sit down and write up a small recommendation as to if, if we wanted to make any changes. I did put in here some of them. I was actually thinking April first for a couple of them, then if you wanted to make any adjustments on July first. And then already have this stuff for January one, so we could figure out our budget right away. And as I emailed you today, the property tax measure did pass, so we will be limited to a three percent increase in our budget for twenty twenty-six, based on the twenty twenty-five budget. Did they, didn't have, did they ever clarify the ninety to a hundred percent evaluation, if you can go up to thirty percent?
They didn't cap valuations, I understand. They are only capping the dollars and the levies that you can do.
Gotcha, okay.
Their, uh, Legal Cities is gonna have a meeting on that to explain everything. Hopefully this all onboard.
I like what you got here. The only thing I did notice is like our bus drivers, which are required to have a CDL, are substantially less than our non-CDL public works people.
Little difference in duties.
A little bit different, but you're also required to have a license where you don't technically even need to have a driver's license to work for the city.
No, it's required. Under our, under our job descriptions, your license is required. Biggest question is, what is gonna happen with transit? If we go to a sixteen passenger or less, they don't require a CDL.
Correct. But you could also have a tiered pay rate, just like we do for non-CDL versus CDL for public works or that.
Yeah, or they get so much per hour for having their CDL.
Correct, yeah.
Which I did include. Cause if they got the CDL, they do get a little bit of a bump compared to what they would've gotten otherwise.
Alright. The only reason that really sparked Maya is we're gonna be one somewhat full-time driver short and one really part-time driver short. And on that, that raise, it might be difficult to get somebody.
Or sort of even retain anybody. I mean, that's kind of, cause I, I, if anything, I think we're gonna end up needing more drivers first. Cause of the lack of drivers, I mean.
Her only concern then is the fact that we've already applied for the grant for twenty-five, twenty-six.
For the, for the, for the.
Make that up.
Yeah, yeah, okay. It's not kinda, that limits us with that, huh?
A little bit.
Okay.
Now, like I said, the enterprise water sewer garbage, we are gonna have to look at rates on some of those.
Sure.
Absolutely, I, I totally agree with that. And you know, if you guys even, I know the taxes and stuff, but you know, you look at our mills compared to all those other cities too. There's only one other city that has, you know, less amount of mills than we do. So, I, I think we do need to make some adjustments and definitely an enterprise stuff first, but yeah. I like this and even, I, when we talked, when we got the, just throwing it to you guys, when we did the pay increase for the, the police, I voted in favor because I, I agree that they needed, that they deserved it and even more, but I hated the timing. Um, so I, I wouldn't have wanted to do July one, I'd, I'd probably wanna wait till the end of the year, like one, one.
Okay.
It's messed up. I don't, I'm sure there'll be, anybody, what do you, what the rest of you think about that or, um, where are your, where you guys, please give some input, I appreciate it.
How much would be, we'd be looking in addition, Monty, if we did the July one for the year?
No, I didn't put that forward, I'm.
Can you just add them up real quick?
You know.
Not times the, the forty hours.
Yeah.
I can do that and we can still do it next meeting if you want. I can give you some more numbers.
I was just wondering if it's gonna be a large chunk of money, you know, or if it's gonna be a eh, not so terrible.
I would say you're looking at a difference of twenty to twenty-seven thousand.
Increase.
Increase.
I know we're gonna have an increase. I, I.
Yeah.
I'm in the same boat, I guess, as, as Jerry. Um, if we wanna look at numbers, well, means we could probably do it next meeting.
I can get thinking that information.
I'd like to hold off till we get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So, Jerry, I guess one idea, you know, if we do the raise then over on the first, first of July, July there, but the only thing is that we don't, I guess, like pay it out until like January.
Oh, I figured, same case, okay.
You know what, be then.
I would agree with that. I'd be fine with that too.
You know, would be then, I guess.
Should be like a bonus?
It'd be like a bonus or a back pay or, yeah.
Oh, see, my intention was that it would be effective July one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, is the way I was looking at it, but it doesn't matter to me.
I see, okay.
So, you're.
In the budget then, I guess we shouldn't have to, you know, do anything with the budget.
You would have to amend the budget to just cover that. You would have to amend the budget to just cover that increase.
Well, but I guess we wouldn't pay it out though.
Until January one.
Yeah, if that's what you want to do, that's perfectly fine, yeah.
Would that be hard to track? For, for payroll purposes?
No, I'd just have to look back at the hours.
So you'd, you'd say, do both these copies, but have it going to affect January one?
Yes, no, it would go and affect July one for the July one, but they wouldn't get that pay until January one, when our new budget is here.
Correct.
So it'd be as a bonus
Yeah.
or back pay potential in IOU.
Yeah, definitely, IOU, yeah.
Then you're, then you're looking at your estimated difference is gonna be a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy pounds.
Correct. Because you'd be that, whatever, that would be over.
Yep.
But we'd be able to budget it that way.
Right, right.
Which, I like that idea.
They seem to case it.
They're still getting it, but they're not gonna get it technically till
Yeah.
January one.
Monty, thank you for putting these things together, so
Yep.
are we still gonna wait, guys, or you want someone to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to go with the thing Casey's sated.
All right, motion by Weidrich, second by Stern, maybe, I don't know.
Jerry, that's right.
Okay, if, if motion by Weidrich, second by Stern, any more discussion?
My only concern about that, Jerry, is the situation, I think I would make it contingent upon them working through the full year, or however you guys want to do that. Otherwise, you could get some ambiguity in there that could be tough to track for us later on down the road, and I don't, we want to open ourselves up to that controversy. So if we're gonna do this, my suggestion would be is make it contingent upon those individuals working through
They have to be employed through December thirty-first.
Correct.
Thanks.
That doesn't make sense.
So you're just really gonna keep your eye on us?
That's right.
Do you, do we need a, a, a change that, Monty, in his motion?
If Commissioner Weidrich is willing to amend or make a motion to amend his original motion to make this contingent upon working through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, so.
Dave, we got a, we got a motion by Weidrich for the amendment?
Second.
Second by Stern, question? Guys, I'm really glad we do, our people deserve this, and it's, it's time, so congratulations to you guys as well. We need to retain our people in this, and they deserve, so thank you. Uh, roll call.
Weidrich?
I.
Stern?
I.
Hack?
I.
Hi, motion carried.
Amendment carried.
Amendment. We got our original motion.
Yep.
That would be the roll call on the amended motion.
Dave, now we need a roll call on the, on the motion. Correct, Monty?
Yeah, as amended, yep.
As amended, yep, okay, roll call please.
Weidrich?
I.
Stern?
I.
Hack?
I.
Hi, motion carried. Takes us down to, uh, public comment, is anybody there in the public?
Not anymore.
Okay, good. Um, approve the bills.
Make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Dave, we got a motion?
Second.
And second. Question? Roll call.
Folkerts?
I.
Weidrich?
I.
Hack?
I.
Hi, motion carried. I'm not a fan of two-hour meeting business, and it's worth it, thank you, guys.
Jason's a shiner.